Yeah. And about five, four forty-five, so I thought, because it's just, it's really stressful. It's like, where the fuck was this? You would think that you'd remember. Yeah. Put them taken down, maybe from the internet.
Yeah.
Actually, I do, I have a log, I need to list them where everything is. But then when I'm looking at them, I don't understand. What do you mean this ghost here? There's no one. So, I decided to take breaks and do something less stressful like. Audit presentation.
Yeah, I always like, I always liked how it looked when it was done, but I keep doing it. I hate it.
You know, we lived in a house for thirty years. It had seven thousand square meters. Oh, my God. It was a, still, forty feet, ten more yards. It was three-story block. So I had, so many. And that was in the house, you know, maybe two thousand. So, still, we're in the house.
Oh, right. Yeah, it'll be a way to read, and it's shutting terribly. And it's starting to look starting to yellow. And I'm like, I'm really gonna be great after this. I'll go as well, or when I'm done with it. I, uh, I think, you know, you can see the white thing.
Oh, yeah.
No, I didn't say that. It's another, it's another time coming. You know, one person who accurately read the email. It was a joke, because he said, respond if you're not coming.
It's all my fault. Doors, everything. Hot doors.
What's around it?
Hey, Siobhan, how you doing?
Not too bad. About ten minutes ago, I thought I lost, like, I couldn't, nobody could hear me, so like, does anybody hear me? No, I can't hear you, so I was like yelling. I've got my mask. But the mic wasn't on, so.
All right, colleagues, I know I originally said we'll start ten minutes after 5:30, but if you're okay with it, I think we can get started now. Pursuant to section eighty-four fourteen twelve of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. The purpose of this meeting is to review and approve the 2019-2020 annual audit report of Douglas County School District 0001. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gotti.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
Cracky. Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan. Smith.
Here.
Snipes.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. I would like to make a motion or entertain a motion to excuse Mrs. Cracky and Ms. Ryan from tonight's meeting.
Someone.
Second.
There's a motion by Ms. Snipes, second by Mr. Smith. Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Cracky. Oh, sorry. Pearlman.
Here.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Just want to let everyone know that Mrs. Cracky is at home and she's attending tonight's meeting, but not in person. She'll be watching tonight's meeting from home, so hello, Nancy. And, and we have no public comment forms, so let's go ahead and get started with our new action. And I think I'll direct it to Mr. Roberts.
Good evening, President Snow, members of the board. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Darren Oston, partner with Sim Johnson, to review the annual audit with us and his findings. Darren, thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, President Snow and board members. Appreciate the opportunity again to provide audit services to you and the district. We certainly enjoyed and value our relationship with you over the years. I want to thank Scott and Shane Ryan and their staff for all their cooperation through the audit process. I know it's a lot of individual additional work into the, in addition to their day-to-day activities and given the current environment of everything, I'm sure it added some additional effort to their day-to-day activities. So, I am going to go ahead and present the audit results to you for the 2020 audit. Again, I am Darren Oston. I am the partner on the engagement. Our team was here pretty much through most of the month of October and some of November, and we are now ready to present drafts to you. So our deliverables to you is the report to the Board of Education, which contains our required communications of those charged with governance and internal control-related matters. So we're going to cover those in the presentation here.
One second, Darren, before you continue.
Yes.
I just want to let everyone know that's watching. Our web stream just went down, but you can still get the cable watching the board meetings. So if you were watching the web stream, it went out, you can switch the cable. So, sorry about that.
What channel is that? Do we know?
It's the TKN channel. I'll pull it up and get it to you.
Thanks.
I think it's eighteen on Cox. I'm not sure what it is on everything else.
Eighteen.
Okay.
Strange. We don't have it.
Ready, ready for me to continue, or? Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. So, all right, thank you very much. And then, so then we have the audit report. So we have the district's audit, which is submitted to you for approval today. We will also have the ESU nineteen audit and the KIOS FM radio station audit. Those will be submitted for your approval on your next regularly scheduled board meeting on the fourteenth. And then OSER's, the plan audit itself, that's under a separate engagement with the OSER's Board of Trustees, and we will be presenting that to them on their meeting this week, later this week. So that will be presented to you also at your next regularly scheduled meeting on the fourteenth. So now, let's get into our required communications. And first of all, is our responsibility for the audit. Our audit's conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. The audit is also being conducted in accordance with the uniform guidance, which is compliance audit due to the extent of the federal warrants you expended. However, that audit will be completed at a later date, and that is because of the CARESAC programs and the guidance for those programs under the OMB compliance supplement have not been released yet. So we will be reissuing your audit at a later date with the uniform guidance report included in it. So the drafts that you have now currently exclude the uniform guidance portion of the audit from that standpoint, and that's related to the ESR funds that you received. Those are a major program that we do need to test this year, and we'll talk about that again on another slide. Our responsibility is plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free from material misstatement. And after our adjustment, we do feel that the financial statements were free of material misstatement, and therefore, we do have an unmodified or a clean audit opinion in the financial statements. We're also required to communicate any accounting practices. There were no changes this year due to most of the accounting pronouncements being delayed due to COVID-19, and the implementation date on those have been pushed back either twelve or eighteen months. Other matters we're required to communicate, management's judgments and estimates. So this is where management can influence the audit, and you'll see we have the estimates included in your financial statements listed, allowance for uncollectible property taxes, depreciation, accrued expenses, fair value investments, and then the net pension liability and the other post-employment benefit plans liability. After adjustment, management's estimates were reasonable and consistent with prior years. So as I mentioned a couple times, I did say adjustments and referred to adjustments. We did have eleven overall audit adjustments. Those decreased net position by approximately nineteen million dollars. That was primarily related to capital asset activities from that standpoint. We also had some past adjustments, or what are referred to as uncorrected misstatements. Those are collectively immaterial to the various opinion units that they were in, and therefore, they are not reflected in the financial statements, but they are included in the report to the board for your information. So moving on, so as I said, we had eleven audit adjustments, and those were material to the financial statements, as they did decrease net position by nineteen million dollars. We had two areas that we did include reportable matters in accordance with government auditing standards. And so what that means is they are included as a finding in the audit related to internal control over financial reporting. We had the capital asset accounting process as a material weakness in internal control over financial reporting, and that was primarily due to the magnitude of the adjustments that we had. There were some system breakdowns within the capital asset module, as well as some manual journal entries that did need correction. Those were not detected and corrected by the internal controls over financial reporting. And then we did have a significant deficiency related to the financial reporting process, and that was related to certain accounts and transactions that were not accurately presented in the financial statements, which resulted in some additional adjustments and some reclassifications for financial reporting purposes. So what caused those? There were some system breakdowns, as we said. You did have a lot of turnover in your accounting and finance department, and then some of the significant deficiency is really just related to the timing of trying to get the year-end close process done and ready for us to audit. Corrective action plan for management is included in the report, and I know they have started to try to implement that process already. Other management advice items that we included, grants management. So this is related to most of your state and federal programs through the Nebraska Department of Education, and really, the timing of when claims are being submitted is causing some cash flow issues. So you are, you are needing to utilize general funds to fund those programs until those claims are being paid by the state and then can be reimbursed back to the, to the general fund. So really, just more of a cash management issue from a timing perspective and trying to narrow the gap of when the expenditure occurs to when the claims are being submitted for reimbursement, so you can get that cash back from the state. And then the COVID-19 and ESR funds, as I mentioned previously, we'll talk about that on the next slide. And then GASB accounting and financial reporting standards, again, those were all delayed due to COVID-19 and were pushed back to future years. So the ESR funds from the education stabilization fund, so you were awarded twenty-three point million dollars. As of August 31st, on a cash basis, the schedule of expenditures of federal awards is reported on a cash basis, so this is actual cash spent as of August 31st. You had seven point eight million included on your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. So this is deemed a major program for the audit this year, and as I said, the guidance for that is not out yet, so the applicable compliance requirements have not been released. So we were unable to audit that program as of current date, and that is why the audit in accordance with the uniform guidance, this what's referred to as the single audit, will be released at a later date. So now, let's just touch on a few financial highlights in the audited financial statements. So you have several component units within the financial statements, and two of them had changes in their fiscal year ends during the year. So the Omaha Public Schools Foundation changed their fiscal year end from a calendar year end to August 31 year end, so now their year end matches the district's. But, so we had to catch up from the previous portion of the year that was not recorded or included in your report, and that would be all of 2019 plus the eight-month period through August 31st. So there's twenty months of activity for the foundation. And conversely, Educare of Omaha, with their merger of, with the Omaha Early Learning Centers, they changed their fiscal year end to a calendar year end, and so therefore, we only have four months of activity reported for Educare of Omaha from September 1 of 19 through December 31 of 2019 in the financial statements. The impact of COVID-19 on operations obviously had a significant impact. You closed schools in March and went to a remote learning environment, and you're, which that resulted then in general fund expenditures were seventy-five million under budget for the year. You also had the issuance of the Series 2020 General Obligation Bonds and the 2020B General Obligation Refunding Bonds. The total proceeds, including premium, was one hundred and eighty-eight million. You are utilizing that for the construction of the new school buildings, primarily the high schools, and then you use the refunding bonds to refund fifty-three million of 2010 general obligation bonds to get a better rate on those bonds. So now, going through the audited financial statements. So the statement of net position and the statement of activities, that is the government-wide level of financial statements, so that includes all activities of the financial statements. Total assets increased one hundred and fifty-six million to one point four billion. So the increases were primarily capital assets related to the bond projects going on. So your capital assets increased forty-seven million dollars, and then your cash and investments increased by one hundred and eleven million dollars, and that is primarily due to the unspent bond proceeds that you still have and haven't used yet for those capital projects. And then your general fund was under budget during the year, so that allowed you to maintain some cash reserves. Total liabilities increased one hundred and ninety-one million to one point eight billion. That is, again, due to the new bond issuance, so the bond obligations were increased by one hundred and fourteen million, and then your net pension liability also increased by fifty-four million from 2019 to 2020. So as you can see, the liabilities increased more than the assets, so therefore, the net position decreased by eighty-five million to a negative one hundred and eighty-four million dollars. And that is primarily due, again, to the pension obligation that was added and due to, part of that is due to the twenty-four million dollar decrease in the foundation's net position, which was primarily related to the assignment of the Sherwood funding that took directly to the district rather than passing that through the foundation. Statement of activities, your total general revenues were seven hundred and twenty-five million compared to seven hundred million in the prior year. That was primarily related to taxes increased by twenty million dollars due to valuation increases and a new levy in the building fund. And then you had state, state funding also increased by thirty-seven million dollars. That was offset, again, by changes in the foundation and Educare, where Educare only had four months of activity during the year, so smaller revenues. Net program expenses of seven hundred and eighty-nine million compared to seven hundred and sixty-six in the prior year. So district, the district's expenses increased about forty-five million, and that was primarily due to instruction and student support line items in the financial statements. And then that was offset by a decrease in the business-type activities, which is primarily the foundation due to Sherwood funds no longer being passed through their Educare due to only being a four-month period compared to twelve months. And then your co-op fund was also down by eight million dollars in the current year. General fund, so the general fund being the main operating fund of the district, revenue increased by thirty-one million to six hundred and thirty million. That was primarily due to taxes and state funding, as you can see, is ninety-seven percent of the general fund. Revenues, taxes were up twelve million or about four percent, and state funding was up twenty million or about six point two percent. Total general fund expenditures increased eighteen point six million. So despite being under budget, your expenditures were, did increase during the year by three point two percent, or eighteen million, to five hundred and ninety-one million. And that is primarily in the basic instruction line item, which is fifty percent of the total expenses in the general fund. That line item was actually up by eight percent, which was then offset by decreases in some of the other line items. So the general fund fund balance amounted to one hundred and ninety-nine million or just under two hundred million. The unassigned fund balance is twenty point three million, and you're, you have your minimum fund balance policy required to maintain between ten and twenty percent. And so part of the reason why the budget was, or why you were under budget so much is because you had put additional funding into the budget to try to get that unassigned fund balance level down. It was twenty-seven percent in the prior year, and you were getting that down to twenty percent, and then that wasn't all spent during the year, so you did assign some funds to the new schools for startup, as well as for the 2021 school year, to get the, to get the minimum fund balance down to the twenty percent that was needed according to the policy. So moving on to the notes of the financial statements, I'll just highlight a few items here. Summary significant accounting policies is really the reporting entity and the, and the financial statements' measurement focus and basis of accounting. That's really who and what is included in the financial statements and how are they presented. So I always like to bring that to your attention, because that can give you the basic understanding of what's in the financial statements. Capital asset activity, I know we talked about that a little bit. This is related to the bond activities. You had total capital additions of one hundred and thirty-five million during the year, and then that, obviously, with the liability increase, you had the new bond issuances of one hundred and eighty-eight million, including the refunding of the 2010 bonds. Principal of seventy-four point four million was retired during the year. That includes the advanced refunding amount. Your outstanding bond obligations totaled seven hundred and thirty point nine million. Your net pension liability increased by fifty-four million to eight hundred and forty-eight million for the district's proportionate share of the net pension liability. We'll talk about that in another slide. And then the other post-employment benefit obligation amounted to twenty-four million. That was a two million dollar increase from the prior year when that was added to your financial statements. And then the tax abatement footnote I always like to bring to your attention, this is a required disclosure by GASB Statement 77. Based on abatements given in Douglas, Sarpy County, the amount of lost revenue associated to, with taxes to these abatements amounts to nineteen point nine million for the district compared to eighteen million in the prior year. So now, we'll talk about the pension-related information. The measurement date for the net pension liability reflected in the financial statements is one year in arrears, so the, the plan, the OSER's audit itself reports the, doesn't include the net pension liability in their financial statements. It's disclosed, but that is as of the current date. The employer share, employer portion of that is reflected one year in arrears in accordance with GASB Statement 68. So your funding status as of August 31st, 2019, which was based on the January 1, 2019 actuarial valuation, amounted to fifty-seven point eight-two percent. The total net pension liability is nine hundred and forty-five million. The district's share of that is eighty-nine point seven million, or eighty-nine point seven percent, or eight hundred and forty-eight million. And that percentage is determined based on what the long-term contribution requirements going forward, the present value of that going forward, and that was an actuarial computation performed by the actuaries in part of that report, so it amounts to eighty-nine point seven percent of the total. The state, which has the two percent contribution requirement, is responsible for the other ten point three percent of that liability, and they recognize that in their financial statements as their proportionate share of that net pension liability. So your employer required contribution rates are a hundred percent, one hundred and one percent of employee contributions, which amounted to thirty-five point six million dollars during the year, or the actuarial, actuarial determined contribution, the ARC, the required contribution to meet solvency. The ARC amounted to nineteen point eight million. The district contributed twenty-one point three million of additional contributions. That was the amount that you had budgeted for during the year. So you had total of fifty-seven million dollars contributed to the plan during the year, which exceeded the required amount by one point five million. So now, looking at the funded status of that, since it has such a significant impact on the presentation of your financial statements. So you can see, as I said, the funding status at 2009 was fifty-seven point eight-two. I did include the 2020 funding status. It did go up to fifty-nine point five-five percent. And the reason for the decline from eighteen to nineteen was your valuation, as I said, takes place on January 1, and if you remember, December, the month of December 2018 was a very poor-performing month for the markets, so the timing of when that actuarial evaluation took place was just not good timing from that standpoint in looking at that number. But ultimately, if you go back to when the ARC was established in 2017, 2017, you put in twelve point five million, and then in 2018, you put in eighteen million, and now this year was twenty-one million. You can see that that has done what it was intended to do, is leveling that off, because you were declining in the, declining in the, in the prior years, because the benefit obligations essentially were exceeding the contributions and the investment returns. So that number kept going down. So you were putting in the additional contributions to try to stop that and start heading it the other way with hopefully more positive market results and the continued contributions that you'll be putting in there that will start trending in the other direction. Obviously, that's going to be a long-term process. That's not, it's going to get fixed overnight, but you certainly have put in the parameters to, to do that going forward. And with that, I will leave it open to any questions.
Sorry about that. So, colleagues, open up for questions, but first, also, just want to thank you for meeting with the committee, as small, as board members in small groups.
Yep.
This process has been a learning process for me. I can speak for myself, and I feel a little bit better in understanding the full auto book, and I appreciate your time and your patience.
You bet.
Open up for colleagues for questions. Mrs. Gotti.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the team here at OPS as well. I know that you all went through some challenging times with the software not working well and being understaffed, so I appreciate both Shane and Scott, you being here and being a part of this, and Shane, you've been here a little bit longer, and we really thank you for digging in, and I'm excited to know that I think the recommendation that was given probably two or three years ago about adding an accounting manager and a controller and a CFO, that we finally are to that place where those positions are getting into place. So I recognize that there were still deficiencies, and as I told Darren last week, I felt like, kind of like Groundhog's Day on that capital asset one, because I feel like it's the same story. But I know, and I'm confident, that next year, it won't be the same story, so I, I'm thankful that you're all here working on that. I just want to piggyback off of some of the things that you said, Darren, and just really think about specifically for the board going forward next year, and also truly for transparency for the public as well, and to really encourage next year's board to be very responsible on the financial side. So on page five of the audit, what I'm, what I always look at is under that governmental activities, that difference between 2019 and 2020. Really, you're thinking about your assets over your liabilities, so we have fewer assets than we have liabilities. And when I started on the board in 2013, that was a positive number, and today, that number has reached two hundred and thirteen million negative. And so I- And so I would just encourage the board to think about how to help bring some of that down, and specifically thinking about OSERS and contributions that you can put in as far as even over and above what is required or even what's budgeted. On page eight, I just want to refer back to what Darren mentioned earlier, just in regard to some of the increases that happened and then the decreases, so there was that roughly twelve million dollar increase in spending. And when we think about that, on page eight and at the top of page nine, we see what that was, and, and those were some of the things we talked about in our small group. So I don't, I want to make sure that the rest of the board heard what I heard, and future board members hear what I heard as well. So at the top of page nine, really focusing in on that investment in technology, early childhood education materials and the ELA curriculum, which, you know, I talked about it way too much about the importance of that, but that's really a big component of what caused the expenses to be more than last year, that was about twenty-four million. And then there were some decreases in student transportation, summer school, and building and grounds, which makes sense, because we were in a pandemic and we weren't spending in those areas. But I think that, from the public standpoint, it's good to understand where that increase came about and why it came about, that Darren just mentioned. And then on page ten, and this was something that we received kind of a little bit more information about today. I think, Darren, you mentioned that we were actually seventy-six thousand less in our actual expenditures than the budgeted expenditures. And so from a standpoint, I know I asked, and today we received just information on that, thirty-three million was for pending purchase orders, twelve million was vacancies which didn't get filled, nine million was transportation savings, twelve million was operations savings, because we weren't in the buildings, which I think is important to think about, the utilities and all those things. We had spent six point five million, and I assume on that textbook adoption, when it says that it was spent in September, I'm assuming that was September of this year, so it didn't get into last year's number, so it was essentially a savings when we thought we were going to spend it last year. And then there were some vehicle acquisitions that didn't happen, so when the public hears we spent seventy-six million less, you know, some of that was just because there were purchase orders that didn't get filled, and all of those kinds of things, and then clearly, some of it was truly related to the pandemic, and I think that's important for the public to know. And I think it's important for board members just to understand that aspect as well. The other thing on page forty-five that I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, and really our constituents who are taxpayers, whether they're renters or homeowners, over the next five years, the bond principal will be reduced by ninety-seven million dollars. As we move through clearing out probably those ninety-nine bonds, I'm thinking that that's where that is from. And that will reduce the tax burden on the taxpayer from a levy standpoint related to the bond part. But I would encourage the board to also be really mindful in thinking about the general levy of a dollar five, how you can either reduce some of that, but also thinking about that pension piece, and making sure that we cover for our teachers. Darren mentioned the tax abatement, and that's really TIF for anybody who's listening and maybe is a little unclear about what tax abatement is, we talk about that a lot. The benefit of that, even though it's close to twenty million dollars, as you mentioned, is that at some point in the future, we'll see those dollars come in, and, and I know we've done studies on when will that happen, so I think that's important. On page sixty-two, really, I think the, the thing that hits me is that back in two thousand and fifteen, we were about seventy-five percent funded on the pension liability. And I'm excited to see that we're almost back up to sixty percent, where this shows fifty-seven point eight percent. And I think the fifty-nine point fifty-five percent that you mentioned, I'm assuming that's the eight thirty-one?
Yeah, because this is a year in arrears on here.
Right.
Even though it says, yeah, that's eight thirty-one, twenty twenty, based on the January one, twenty twenty actuarial valuation.
And the fifty-seven eighty-two percent is really twelve thirty-one?
That's the one-one nineteen.
One-one nineteen, right.
Rolled forward to August thirty-one nineteen, yeah, so it's one year in arrears.
Right, so we'll see that, we will see that new valuation come in on January one. And you'll all get it probably sometime in April. I think the market's been pretty good, and I'll mention a few things related to the pension in just a few minutes. But I think that's important to think about the fact that a healthy pension is eighty percent funded. And so when we're sitting at, even at sixty percent, that's not healthy yet, by any means. On page seventy-seven, and I just want to clarify, because I think I misunderstood Mr. Roberts, when you said twenty million excess in the school lunch funds, that it had happened this year. And that isn't really the case, so if you look on page seventy-seven, we really started the year with a balance in the fund balance of twenty-six million, and we ended with twenty-three million. So it got my curiosity up, and I went back and pulled past audits, because I was trying to figure out, how long have we had a large fund balance, and it's been a lot of years, so I guess I would just encourage the board to, and I've missed it over the years, so I didn't really pay attention to that, but I would just encourage the district and the board to think about what we could do to enhance food offerings for our students in the buildings. The one thing I constantly hear when I talk to any high school or from any, any school is we need more to eat, and, you know, whether it be from a protein standpoint, or we need different, interesting foods, so there's quite a bit of money there, and maybe there's some opportunity to do some different things through our lunch program for kids. And I think that would be huge, because if you think about what a child needs during the day, and that food really keeps them going and, and keeps their interest level in school up, and then I think about our athletes and just how they need that energy and that fuel to get through to practice, so from, from that standpoint, if there's something we can do, and I think you mentioned that you guys are looking at some things.
Yeah, so to recap, if we look at the last ten years in the nutrition fund, we were twenty-three point two million in two thousand and eleven. It's pretty much stayed at that level with some puts and takes, the lowest in the last ten years is twenty-two point one, the largest was last year's balance. So we've kind of been at that level. So we try to reserve three to four months of operating activities in the fund, which is roughly seventeen million dollars. The higher balance that we're maintaining right now is really to augment the, the bond proceeds or the non-bond spending for the five new schools that we will incur over the next year and a half. So we do expect that balance to come down, we are looking at programs as well to utilize those funds.
I just think that's, I just think it's really important for our kids who, you know, are looking for that nutrition in the day, and I also am just really thankful and, and point out that today, which wasn't always the case, we do make sure that we refund money that's left over in a child's account, and that we have a way for individuals to pay online and keep track of their balances, and I think that's, that's been a huge improvement, which was something I really fought for when I got on the board. So I'm pretty happy, because my child was always calling saying, I don't have any money in my lunch account, and I don't have anything to eat, so I thank the district for working on that, so thank you.
Thank you.
I want to just reflect a little bit on the pension, because you all know that that's been something that's been near and dear to my heart as I've worked over the years. On page six, we really, the really interesting thing is that even by putting in the extra money into the pension, we're still, our pension liability still increased fifty-five million, and I think as Ms. Snipes works on the Better Together Coalition and some of those issues that are out there, it'll be very important to think about that liability and to really try to, to address that. The one really, I think, good news piece of that is on page twenty, and then I think, actually on page twenty-one, the net appreciation in fair value of investments went up nearly a hundred million dollars, ninety-eight million dollars, we have not seen that increase. So to Darren's point that putting in that extra money has helped to stabilize, that's been part of it. But a big part of what happened was in two thousand and sixteen, we moved that money to the Nebraska Investment Council. And they have revamped the way that those investments happen, and for us to see an appreciation and fair value is huge, including the fact that I think, when we were talking last week, Darren, and I just want to, I think this is really important for not only my fellow board members, but also the public and the retirees, because of some of the conversation. But the, the change that happened, on page thirty-seven, we have all those limited partnerships or those kind of exotics that we've had. And a year ago, that balance was at three hundred and sixty-six million, that balance today is at two hundred and ninety-seven million. That's not necessarily all because of disbursements from those limited partnerships, some of that is just pure losses. So when you look at the page with ninety-eight million in investment increase, that also takes into account that the Nebraska Investment Council had to recognize losses. And one of those in particular, that I want to give a shout out to Matt Scanlon and to Justin Wayne, because they were really the two that led the board in not approving an additional fifty million, was twenty-five cap, and and we talked to Darren last week about this when we were in a, the Budget Committee meeting. I think a year ago, you said the balance was eighteen million, today that balance is nine million, but all that nine million was a loss, and so while we think about the board having voted no on that particular investment six and a half years ago, pretty, pretty much, actually, probably close to seven years ago, and the frustration with that, the positive is, we didn't put an extra fifty million in there as a Board of Education. And that's really important for the board to remember, because it's the board's responsibility to address these issues, and the board made the right decision in that particular instance, and so that's why I thank Mr. Scanlon and Mr. Wayne, because they really were concerned about that particular investment, and they had very good reason to be concerned, as we saw a deficit happen. So I think the positive is, we still saw a ninety-eight million increase, while we saw potentially deficits happen in some of those limited partnerships. And we did see, I do think it's important to point out that the Nebraska Investment Council is reviewing those partnerships. And of the seven that they had their investment folks take a look at, five passed, one was a maybe, and one had the management replaced. And so the positive for the retirees and the way they should look at that is, the Nebraska Investment Council is taking very seriously those investments and how they're managed, and recognized that that particular investment was not well managed, and removed the leadership of seventy million dollars, which was, which is a lot of our, that's, that's a big number, and so I think that's really important to remember. The other thing on page fifty that I just want to point out, because I, because of my past history and being with the Nebraska Investment Council and really following their work, is that when you look at the long-term expected rate of return, really, Aon, which is their investment advisor, recommends that it's somewhere between, somewhere slightly below seven percent. And so when you look here, and it's in the audit, and it's very clearly laid out, when you look at the largest portion of where the investments are, it really does fall in that below seven percent, and our current estimate is seven and a half percent. So if you look at six and a half percent, the liability could be much higher and closer to over a billion dollars. So I think that too is important for this board to always be mindful of, in taking care of our retirees and taking care of our current employees, because it's so important that we make sure that they're well taken care of. On page fifty-one, Darren mentioned that the state picks up part of that liability, the ninety-seven million. And so you may be asked questions about why, why should the rest of the state pick up ninety-seven million of OPS? But we, with our taxes, who reside in OPS, are also paying part of the rest of the state's pension as well. And so it's, it all works out together, and so I think that that's an important issue for you all to remember, and that one is one that potentially could become a legislative component. And so I want you all to be really mindful of fighting hard for that one as you move forward, because that's, that's a hundred million dollars of the teacher's money that should be covered as we go forward, so I guess I just, I just really think that pages sixty-two and sixty-three, which also just show that difference and that drop in, drop in the value, to just remember that the more that can be put into the pension, the more stable it will become. And to reflect back on Senator Nordquist and Senator Mello's efforts to try to get everything closed up within that closed thirty-year period, we're not in that. But to remember that the state, which is much closer to being funded, at some point, their teacher contributions may not be as high, because they will become fully funded, and that will have an impact on the teachers here in OPS. I care very much for our teachers, and I care very much that we are mindful of that, so I leave that charge to, to the future board. So I think, and that was, that's, I just wanted to clarify some of the things that you had, and from transparency and from the answers that both Mr. Roberts and Mr. Austin gave while I was in small group and the Budget Committee meeting. I always feel like those things should be shared with the whole board, and that from a transparency to the public, that they understand the, the good and the bad of, of what happens in the audit and, and the work toward trying to hold costs down, and trying to put the funding into the, to the retirement system as well. So with that, I do thank all of you for all of the efforts, and I have said I'm not going to read the audit next year, so. So I wish you all the best on that.
Yeah, with, with, so with that, with the net pension liability, it actually did go down, it'd be about nine million or about one percent for this next year when it's rolled forward, so that's, that's the positive from that aspect.
Right, and we may see it even go down further once you get to that January.
The one-one-twenty-one.
I mean, one-one number, I would hope.
Yeah.
Because you look at what, while you look at where the Dow and the S and P is, really, you're probably looking more at S and P-type numbers when you're thinking about the return on investment, but you also look at the fact that interest rates are really low, and that can have the other effect too, so.
Any other questions?
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Proman?
Thanks, so when the values for the pension assets and liability, what was the date every year that those are?
So I'll get to that, so the, 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 the net pension liability reflected in your financial statements is one year in arrears. So it is based off the January, so your actuarial evaluation every year is January one.
Okay.
So the amount in your financial statements for the employer's share of the liability is one year in arrears, so it's the one-one-nineteen actuarial evaluation rolled forward to August thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen, because it's compared to the asset value at that date, compared to what the obligation is to determine what your liability is. Then, then it's done every year, so in OSERS, the planned financial statements, the planned financial statements which are included on page twenty and twenty-one of the report, those are based on the one-one-twenty valuation rolled forward to August thirty-one, twenty twenty. It's complicated, because that, that's just how the Gatsby was written, that's how they, how they do it, it's, it's one year in arrears for the employer's share.
And so from two thousand and seventeen through today, how much has OPS contributed to the, to the pension and those ARCs?
I believe the first year, I think it was, I think it was twelve and a half was the. I believe the first year, I think it was, I think it was twelve and a half was the arc the first year, and then it went up to eighteen, and then it's been twenty-one the last two years, nineteen and twenty.
So about seventy million or so in proximity?
Yeah, something like that.
Yet.
Seventy-three-ish, seventy-five?
But yet the liabilities has still increased?
It, it did. So as you can, you can, basically that funding status basically represents the, what the liability has done. So from seventeen to eighteen, it actually went down a hair. But then in nineteen, it went up again, and that was again due to the timing of when that valuation took place and what the market did. And then in twenty-twenty, it's, it's gone down again because the funding status is up.
And I think I say this every year. I'm, I'm just like an armchair finance guy, just off what I, I read. So in, in January of twenty-sixteen, the, the stock market was at sixteen thousand, and today it's at thirty thousand. That's a hundred ninety percent gain. I know the OSERS investments isn't an index fund, but it's, it's doubled essentially in four years plus an additional seventy million. I'm not understanding why the, why it's only leveled.
Because prior to that, so your, your obligations or what your benefit obligations are to the retirees and the active employee and, and that, that's grown too.
Okay.
So that's grown, they, it was growing faster than what the contributions and what the investment return was.
So that's, that's grown significantly and?
Yeah. I mean, that's, yeah, because if you'd go back and look at what the total pension liability was from back in two thousand and sixteen, or I'm sure it's a much lower number than what it is now from that standpoint.
And, and what's, what's behind that? Is it just a fluke in the, in the numbers or?
Well, if you look on page sixty-two, you can actually see that.
That's where I was going to go.
That, yeah, that pension liability and truly the net pension liability back in fifteen was four hundred and thirty thousand, and now it's nine hundred and forty-five, or four hundred and thirty-one million, and now it's nine hundred and forty-five million. You have to think about the retirees who, who have retired and are now drawing. And they were the higher paid individuals. Then as, as new teachers come in, they're lower paid, so they're contributing less, as well as probably two years ago, we were sitting on nearly four hundred million in those alternatives. And so if you think about that being down to two hundred and sixty-six million, I guarantee you, that wasn't all return of investment. There's been losses through there. So, and in fifteen and sixteen, I think we were flatlined pretty much, um, on return, even though the market had returns. So, um, the Nebraska Investment Council, I think, has done a great job of trying to get us aligned more closely to what the state teachers' fund is. We're still just sitting on a bunch of alternatives.
If you look at page sixty-two, if you look at the top half of that table, that is the total pension liability. That's actually the whole, that's the benefit obligation. So that went from one million seven hundred and twenty-six, or one point seven billion in two thousand and fifteen to two point two billion in two thousand and twenty. So it went up five hundred billion over that time. So the obligation is going up, and, and you're putting the contributions in to try to cover that.
Sure.
Essentially, and that's what the contribution is, is to maintain solvency now. So it's, so it doesn't increase more than, than what it, than what the contributions and the returns are. And then hopefully the investment returns, as you continue to do that, will help. And you made some changes in some of the benefits as well over the last few years as far as some of the, some of the changes in the profits for future retirees that was supposed to help kind of keep that, um, obligation from continuing to grow as fast as it was.
Well, that's, that's the.
So there were some changes in the plan too, some from that.
That's the next question. What, what rate of increase in liabilities can we project over the next five years?
Yeah. And I, I'm sure the actuaries have done planning that out because I know they've given you a long-term, a thirty-year, kind of what the planned arc is over a thirty-year period.
Right.
And I'm sure you guys have, have seen those numbers. But they, that's kind of where it averaged out to be. You know, it first started out at twelve, and then it was eighteen, twenty-one, and I think it goes up to like twenty-four. And I think it continues to climb a little bit over the years. And hopefully where, you know, some of the investment returns will help, you know, bridge that gap from that standpoint.
Okay. And.
Yeah. It's, it's a, a lot, it's not going to get fixed, you know, overnight or the next, even the next five years. It's going to be a long-term.
Right.
There's no doubt about that. It's going to be a long-term, uh.
How actively managed are these alternative investments? Or is it just, you know, let them, I mean, I, I guess I don't, I've always had, but I've always had questions about that. You know, I was looking at, was that on page thirty-five? Um, yeah, uh, I would say, looks like three, four, five percent of them are junk bonds, um, you know. So that's, those.
That's not really the alternatives, though.
That's not, that's right.
Oh, really? Oh.
The alternatives are in various limited partnerships and, um, yeah, that's what the, it's investments in various limited partnerships. It's not disclosed in here what they're all invested in from that standpoint.
So that's not the two hundred and seventeen million?
Where are you, what page are you on?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. No, that's actually, um, those are, um, government and corporate bonds and what the rating are of your, of some of your, uh, bond obligations or bond investments that you have and what the, the rating are on those. But those are not associated with the limited partnerships, no.
And are these OSERS or these district bonds?
Those are, that's, this is, those are from the OSERS disclosures, yes.
Okay. Um, so how much money is tied up in the contractual ones that I thought I was talking about?
In the, if you go to the thirty, page thirty-seven, you can see a breakdown of the OSERS investments by fair value. So at the bottom, it's two hundred and ninety-seven million is what's in there.
And last year it was what, three hundred and what?
Three hundred and, uh, what'd you say?
I think three hundred and sixty-six million was what I wrote down.
It went down about seventy million.
Okay. Um, and so what's, what's the outlook for those?
So for instance, Mr. Pearlman, the, the twenty-five cap that I mentioned, that was the investment in, um, mortgages in New Jersey, Florida, Nevada, and one other state that I can't remember, um, Illinois, I think. And so.
Sounds good.
So when you're meeting, so yes, there are active managers of these funds because they're clearly going out and soliciting the business, right? It's just whether or not it's as viable as you want it to be.
And so each of those, each of, each of those partnerships have a separate audit done, and that's kind of what we rely on is getting the audited financial statements of those partnership investments. We test a sample of them, uh, to test the value of those to make sure that they're appropriately stated in OSERS financial statements.
And the Nebraska Investment Council is the decision-making entity on what to do with those? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, they inherited them.
They inherited some of them, yes, yes.
Um, okay. Well, I guess now I, I have more questions on page thirty-five. So did Nebraska Investment Council choose these investments themselves, or did they inherit these as well?
Uh, I don't know that a hundred percent. Uh, I'm sure it could be some of both from that standpoint because depending on what the maturity may have been on some of those, they may have existed at the time as opposed to, um, any that they purchase now. So I don't know that off the top of my head from that standpoint.
And is it unusual to have fifty percent of the investments not rated?
Yeah. I, I, those are ones they didn't provide a rating with them from the, the NIC. We disclosed this based on the information that we got from the NIC for the Nebraska Investment Council.
Okay. And is it accurate to say that non-investment grade investments are BB and lower?
I suppose that would be subject to interpretation. But yeah, that would be about six, eight and a half, nine and a half, about a little under ten million of the total.
Okay.
That are in that ca, that category.
Does, do you, and I don't know if you know the answer to this. Is, is it common for a pension fund to invest in junk bonds?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I'm sure, I know there's.
It seems weird.
I, I'll, I'll put it this way. I know there's, I know there are other pension funds who are in worse shape than OSERS, but there are a lot that are in better, better shape as far as funded status goes from that standpoint.
I guess ultimately, what I want to know is does the Nebraska Investment Council invest pension money in junk bonds? They don't? No?
No, I doubt it. I'm sure some of that was inherited.
Inherited.
Yeah. I, I don't know for sure.
There were, there were inherited.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some inherited.
The, the bonds had some issues, right, around them? So, but I, but I'm curious too on that non-rated, why that, what that would even mean.
We can ask, we can ask them that, we can follow up with that question.
Okay.
And also, board members, if you would like, uh, we could have our superintendent reach out to Michael Walton Newman and provide more information for you as it's something that I think his department can better explain us, to us, other than our auditor who has given us the numbers as they.
I understand. I don't mean to be unfair.
No, you're, you're fine. It's a perfectly valid question.
That's all I have. Thanks.
Understood. Well, I think all my questions have been answered about tax abatement, our, our payment. You know, understanding that, you know, it looks like we have more money in our, our bank account right now as a district, but most of this is COVID dollars that we haven't been able to spend. And seeing that burden not just with, uh, our teachers as well as future employees of planning if they want to come into Omaha Public Schools. And I just want to thank our finance department for everything you've done. Since Scott Robertson's getting there, Shane, since you've gotten here pre-COVID and been doing all this work. Also thank our superintendent for the work she's done, bringing in a robust team to turn our finance department a hundred percent around. So thank you so much, Dr. Logan, for that. I appreciate it, and, uh, it, it means a lot. Also, Luanne Godding, thank you for your words of encouragement on Budget Committee and always being able to, uh, make sure everybody crosses their Ts and dots their Is before presenting it. Um, so thank you so much. And, um, without that, I think that is the end. We have an action on it, so I will entertain a motion to approve this action.
So moved.
Here's a motion by Mrs. Godding, second by Mr. Smith. Any other discussion? Hearing on, Mr. Ray, roll call, please. Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Seven. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you again, and happy holidays. Let the record reflect, the board adjourned at six-thirty-three. Good night, everybody.